Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the East Windsor Regional School District Board of Education. Our meeting will now begin. Written advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice provided the time, date, and location of this meeting and included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes of this meeting are being kept by the Board Secretary and will be made available promptly to any member of the public requesting them from the Board Secretary at twenty-five A Lashen Lane, Hightstown, New Jersey. Minutes will be provided at cost and in accordance with board policy. Are there any board members present who believe this meeting to be in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act? There being none, we may proceed. In compliance with the fire code of the state of New Jersey, I call your attention to the emergency exits for this room which are located behind you over there and to our left and right. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C.
Having read the materials received, I move the agenda to be approved as submitted.
Second.
Please pull the board. Ms. Concepcion.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Item D.
Be it resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting. These closed sessions concern HIV report of March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and personnel. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Please pull the board. Ms. Concepcion.
Yes.
Ms. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
We will now move on to our student representative report.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see all of you, and we're thrilled to share some of the recent school happenings.
First, to start, we would like to highlight the efforts of our robotics team after their competition this past weekend in Ben Salem, Pennsylvania. As the alliance captain of the fifth-ranked team, our robotics team ranked fourth out of nine teams and qualified for the first Mid-Atlantic District Championship, which will be taking place at Lehigh College from April third to April fifth. If all goes well, they have a chance to advance and go to Worlds competition in Houston, Texas around the end of spring break. We congratulate them on their efforts and wish them all the best in the upcoming competition.
We'd love to share that our hard-working Hightstown musical team will be hosting an instrumental festival concert at Manchester High School this Friday at seven P.M. Be sure to check out the band website and your email for more information.
Speaking of musical events, we had an incredible turnout with our school's production of Chicago, the Musical of Justice, last week. After looking at the overall turnout, we are proud to say that this musical had the most attendance of all four shows in Hightstown history since the nineteen-eighties. We want to commend our students who are part of the musical and the crew team, along with the directors who made it happen. It was a great show for everyone in the district.
The Hightstown High School Parent Association is hosting a Bingo Night fundraiser on April fifth, which is actually a Saturday night starting at seven P.M. Be sure to be there to support our parent association that works hard to help our student activities.
Next, we would like to offer our congratulations to the students who participated in the FCC LA competition. In particular, we have student Marjorie Samoya, who achieved a gold medal in the yarn art event and a bronze medal in the repurpose redesign event at the recent FCC LA State Conference in Cherry Hill. We also have Mahi Patel to congratulate, as she has achieved a silver medal in the fashion design event at the recent FCC LA State Conference in Cherry Hill. Great job to Marjorie, Mahi, and the other students who participated. Keep up the good work.
I would just discuss the incredible performance of our Hightstown High School FBLA students last week. We've had a total of seventeen students qualifying for the international level at Anaheim, California, and thirty state finalists, top ten winners. This is the highest number of students winning in the history of our program, and this has been an incredible achievement for us all.
Next, we would also like to highlight the fact that we are off of school this upcoming Monday to observe Eid, the Islamic holiday recognizing the end of Ramadan. All schools in the district will be off on Monday, but will resume school on the regular schedule from Tuesday onwards.
Quick announcement for the senior class: The senior class advisors are now taking orders for cap and gowns, which cost thirty dollars. Payment can be made using Ticket Spicket. Please email or see Mr. Bucci or Mr. Betamont to provide your height, weight, and cap gown color choice. Orders placed after April eleventh will be forty dollars.
This concludes the end of our report. Thank you, everyone, for listening, and we look forward to seeing you again at the next meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your informative report, as always, and congratulations to all our students for their great achievements. Does anyone have any questions? If not, we'll move on to our student achievement update.
Okay, I'm gonna just turn things over to Sandy Small, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Assessment. Tonight will serve as an update regarding student progress, primarily based on our district assessments to give us a sense of student growth to this point in the year.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm gonna run this in a little bit a different way. I'm gonna run kindergarten through eighth grade, go through the data for ELA and for math, and then at the end, the supervisors are gonna come in and talk about what have they done since this data? What did we do saying this data is really positive? Here's the intentional resources and supports we put in, and here's what we've done in those areas that the data's not quite where we want it to be. So then we'll answer any questions at the end of that. Okay, so we're gonna start with K-two. And as we go through kindergarten, one of the things, so I'm gonna go through, try and talk columns and stuff so that you're on the same page as me. So, one of the things that we looked at is we have the very first row is our district, then we have EMK, and we break EMK up as the total population. GE is general education students, SE is special education students, ELL are ESL or multilingual learners. And then in some areas, we have SE and ESL, and that indicated when we have a significant amount of students that have both resources that they need. And then our fourth column, where it says percent of class, talks about the percent of students that are in each of those categories. Okay, so with STAR early literacy that we do for kindergarten and first grade, they have numerous domains that they test. I only took the two that are, I feel, are foundational, which would be the phonemic awareness and sentence comprehension, and then toward the end is the early literacy. So, we're gonna go through and compare some of those. So, if we look at early literacy, SS is the scale score. If we look October to January, what we will see in each of these areas is that there has been some really nice growth from October to January. And this is pretty average from what we've seen in the last couple of years, which is just above what we had with the pandemic. When we look at phonemic awareness, those scores have increased, which is really what helps the scale score increase, and the same thing with sentence comprehension. So, our students in kindergarten are moving very nicely along the curriculum. When we go through and look at early numeracy, we see, again, some nice movements. So, what we would call here is typical growth. Our students are growing the way they should be. And we talk about accelerated growth, and then we also talk about regression or low growth, if you will. We go into grade one, everything is pretty similar to what we talked about in kindergarten. The difference we have here are running records, which is another assessment that we do for our students, which would be May, October, and February. And what you will see with the running records is it's pretty consistent growth in, for each of the buildings and for all populations. Then when we go into the STAR early lit, one of the things that, and I'm gonna talk about this in a little bit, one of the things that I'm always going to compare is May to January and not September to January or September to December, because September, we can have that slide, and we can have some false positives where we're seeing growth from September to January, September to December. However, it doesn't match where they were in May, so I'm always gonna be doing May to the point in time that we're referring to. So, what we see here is if you look in EMK, the general ed students, they have improved from May to December, but it's a slight improvement, not the significant one that we would like to see. So, that's just a watch. That's why it's in yellow. It's not that it's something that is a major concern. And then the same thing with the phonemic awareness. And the phonemic awareness is something that has changed the scale score for that. One of our concerns is special ed in EMK, because what you will see, it is just pretty much equal to where they were in May, so there really hasn't been any gain there, and that's shown with both phonemic awareness as well as sentence comprehension. And then if you look at WCB, you're gonna see that for special ed and ELL, that we're seeing the gains are either some losses or gains not where they belong. Then we go into grade one math. And you're gonna see these in red, especially with the special ed in EMK for early numeracy. There is a growth, but it is almost a negligible growth, because it's a seventy-five to a seventy-six, which basically says it's pretty flat. So, they do early lit, but then we also do STAR math, and the STAR math is where we're gonna come into being able to do longitudinal growth through high school. One of the things that you see with our special ed students in EMK is they had a significant jump in STAR math, which is really nice to be able to see from that. And then in WCB, when you look at the ELL students, they had a really nice jump in STAR math from two thirty-seven to two ninety-nine. The reason that is in yellow is even though they had a great growth, they haven't yet met our gen ed students from where they began. So, we wanna make sure that accelerated growth continues so that we can build on the skills that they've started. Some of the things I wanna go through that I'm gonna just, I make an assumption sometimes that you know the terms I'm using, so I just wanna do a quick review here. One of the things that as a district we have really been strong with in the last twenty years is that our STAR renaissance, our STAR reading, and STAR math is very much aligned to what the state data is, and it's our scale score that is in there. So, when we talk about the alignment, some of the things I will show you is for math in ELA, where we were last May and how we did in MJSLA, so that we can say to you, here's what the data says, and this is why we put so much stock into our STAR reading and our STAR math. The scale scores allow us to show growth over time for an individual student. Then you're gonna hear the term IRL, which is the instructional reading level, and this shows where a student is reading in relationship to peers of the same grade, not just in district, nationally. So, just as a little tutorial, that if a student in grade six tests in September, the assumption would be that student would test at six-point-one, which is sixth grade first month. If that same student tested in January, his score was a six-point-five, that would demonstrate typical growth, because it's five months, so it's a six-point-five. If the same student tested a seven-point-two, that's an accelerated growth, because they've had more growth than that timeframe. And then if that same student had a six-point-three, that's gonna be a minimal growth. So, there's growth, but it's not to be able to keep that child up to par with his or her peers. And then I did talk to you already about the last bullet as to why I do May to the end point. This is really busy, but I'm gonna talk through piece at a time with you. Again, for grade two, we're gonna talk about running records, and you're gonna see that the running records are consistently growing for our students. Then I wanna move over to the far right side, just so we can talk about, because this is us going through showing what these numbers mean. So, if you look at EMK on the very top, that little box, this is EMK eight months growth. So, the students go from September at a one-point-one-five to January at one-point-nine-two. That means they grew eight months in that four-month window. So, that's what we would call accelerated growth. It wasn't a month for month. And then if you look at WCB, they went from a point-nine to a two-point-oh, and that's more than a year's growth in that. So, that's some real good data that we can see. One thing I don't want you to get confused with, and you will as we go through this, is scale score may show some growth and IRL may not, because they're looking at two different things. Up until grades two, three, four, and part of five, this scale score, which is aligned to the state assessment, is, the bar is a little bit lower. Once we come into fifth grade, that scale score has to rise dramatically to keep up with what the state expectations are, whereas the IRL is gonna be pretty consistent throughout. Then the other thing I wanna show, which is on the top box, is although we're seeing this growth of nine months overall, we wanna be really clear that in that January, in order to be on level, the student should be at a two-point-four. So, even though the overall districts is one-point-nine-seven, and they've grown nine months, which is great, because we're gonna fill that gap, we're not quite where we should be yet. So, we're gonna look at growth as well as where the mastery is there. So, hopefully that makes sense. One of the positives I wanna talk about on this slide is our ESL students, and that's one of the things that we have seen, because the younger our students are that we get them, the greater the growth that they can have. So, what we're noticing here is for EMK in second grade, our students have grown more than one year in this four months in their L-two, not their primary language, and that speaks volumes for what we're able to do here. And then in WCB, they have grown more than a year and a half during that same time period. So, the programs are working that have been instituted down there. So, as I said, I know there's a lot on this slide, and that's gonna be our K-two. Then when we go into grade three for ELA, this slide is basically going through talking, because we don't have the state assessment yet for this group, we're going through and looking at our scale score and our instructional reading level. So, I wanna focus on the first part, which is our scale score. You will see from May to January, all groups grew. The reason those are in yellow in the January is that they haven't grown quite to the typical or accelerated growth that we would be hoping for. And then if we go over, and what you'll notice in that middle column where it says on or above, that talks about the percentage of students who, if they were going to take the assessment in January, the state assessment, this is what the predictability of those who would be meeting or exceeding expectations are. But that's our mid-market, our mid-year, so we know what we have to go to be able to get to May. Then when we look at our last three columns, which is our STAR, our IRL, which is the instructional reading level, this is where you're gonna be able to see the growth. So, hopefully this is gonna make sense, and on the far right corner of the top box talks about the growth in GNR. Our gen ed students grew eight months, eight months in five months, special ed six months, and ESL six months. God bless you. And then you will see the bottom box tells you the same growth for PLD. What I have in that little box right below the chart, I talk about what the on level would be. So, in May, it would have been a two-point-nine, September, three-point-one, and January, three-point-five, if they were strictly on level. Then I go to grade three math, and when we look at grade three math, we see some major jumps in our scale score from May to January, which is really nice for us to be able to see. But if we look at that last column, we still have at most, which is the gen ed and GNR, thirty-four percent of our students that are meeting grade level expectations based on January. So, we still have, as I said, we still have four months prior to assessment. That's gonna be something that we need to make sure we're focusing on. Then I go into fourth grade ELA. This slide is strictly to be able to show the similarities between the state assessment and our STAR reading scale score based on last year's data. So, if you go look at GNR's thirty-two-point-nine percent on the state, our scale score for STAR is thirty-one-point-seven. So, it's, you know, very consistent there, and the same thing with PLD, twenty-seven-point-nine to twenty-three-point-nine. So, that's how we're saying that we know the system that we're using is accurately measuring how we would do on state assessments. This next slide is really talking about our students' growth this year. So, if we look again from our reading from May to our reading till January, you're going to see nice jumps all the way through in scale score. If you look at the percent of students on or above in May of last year to where we are this year, you're gonna see it's pretty, it's pretty flat, so we haven't gained and we haven't lost students in there. We really wanted to be able to try and see how we can accelerate that growth. And that's for GNR. If you look at PLD for ELA, you're gonna see a really nice jump from twenty-four percent of the students approaching to thirty-four percent of the students approaching. And that's also with our gen ed in PLD, as well as our special ed. If we look at the instructional reading level for grade four, and I tried to do this so your eyes can see what your matching color, color-wise, if you look at the instructional reading level, you're gonna be able to see the box on the far right that tells you how much was grown within these five months. And I wanna draw your attention to PLD. Special ed students that were tested grew more than a year within that timeframe, so that's what we would consider accelerated growth there. One of the things that, again, I wanna draw our attention to is although we're seeing growth collectively, fewer than fifty percent of our students in fourth grade are meeting grade level expectations as it stands in January. In grade four for math, we're gonna be able to, again, look at the scale score from May to the STAR, I'm sorry, to Januaries, and again, you're gonna see growth, but what you're not going to see in all groups is the accelerated growth that we had seen. So, if you look at our ESL, four for GNR, you're going to see a short growth. You're gonna see there was a summer slide, and then there was growth in there. But the percent of students that were on or above grade level expectations in May of last year to where we are now is a concern. We have dropped dramatically, so we need to be able to do something now. And as I said, the supervisor's gonna talk to you about some of the things that they are doing in these areas. But that's gonna be an area that we've got to accelerate so that we're not losing these students. In grade five, this is, again, the slide to show the state assessment versus the STAR, and again, you're gonna see all of that is pretty close to where we scored last year on the state assessment and what the STAR scale score told us. If we go to grade five and measure the scale score from May until January, again, you're going to see a nice increase. So, our students are being successful. They are growing. It's simply a matter of we're not sustaining the growth that has happened prior to the year. So, if we're looking, the GNR, the total growth was, I'm sorry, the total percent of students who were on or above level was thirty-five-point-six percent. We're at twenty-nine-point-nine. And again, we're measuring May. And again, we're measuring May to January, so we do have a couple of months to be able to bring that up. But at this point in time, we are not quite there. If we look at grade five IRL, again, we're going to see the growth. And what's interesting here is our scale score, even though our students are not meeting that scale score expectations with the state, you're going to see that we have increased the number of our students who are reading at or above grade level. If we look at grade five math, we're going to again, say you're going to hear the same story for some of these. We're showing growth in the scale score. Um, in most areas, ESL five, we have a lack of growth. And we do know there's a rationale as to some of the things that um took place as to why that growth isn't there. Hopefully we are in the process of rectifying that so that we do see that growth. Um, the percent of students who are on or above level right now in grade five math needs to be adjusted like this. There's something that is not showing. And what, showing growth, even though the scale score is we're not growing quickly enough. In our six eight, this first slide is really just telling us that our state assessment data matches our STAR. In grade six ELA, what you're going to see here is in the darker green, again, our students are growing in the scale score. And we are pretty much um matching the growth that we have, we're thirty-seven point five to thirty-three. Um, and that being the January, that's not as alarming. One of the things you're going to see differently in the middle school than you did in the K five is because we have various levels, um I broke this up into ELA six is what really our Gen Ed students, our ELA C O M P is our comprehensive class for our General Ed students who need additional supports. Our ICS classes are OCR, MDLD combined, and our SEI, which is our Shelter English Instruction for our multilingual learners. So that's where you're going to see all of that broken up. So besides our top box, we have this here. So what you're going to be able to compare here is the percent of students on or above in each of those levels in May to where they are now. In comparing grade six instructional reading level, you're going to notice on the right hand box, you're going to see some really nice jumps. And again, here for SEI students, they have grown one point three years within this five month span, which is really nice to be able to see. And one of the other positives you're going to see in the grade six IRL is not only did they make sure that the IRL, but the percent of students on or above level is also um comparable to the rise in the IRL. In one area, um there's a slight dip, and remember, this is based on the number of students, so the percentages are seen a little off. Would be within the ICS, but being eight students, one student can change that. In grade six math, again, it's showing that the state and the STAR scale score are shown comparable percentages. When we're comparing the scale score in May, uh for math, to the scale score in June, you're going to see not quite the growth that we had seen in other areas. Our total population was at a seven thirty-eight point nine, we're only at a seven forty-four. So that's really low growth, if any, um if you're looking through that. Um, then if you look at our Gen Ed students, they also, we can't just, you know, always say, one of the things I want to be careful is that we can't say it's, oh, it's because of Special Ed or it's ESL. So our Gen Ed students haven't shown growth there in sixth grade as well. The thing that to me is the most alarming is those double accelerated students in pre-ado. They came in with ninety-eight percent of those students meeting or exceeding expectations. We're now ten percentage points below that. So eighty-eight sounds good, but when they're double accelerated, that loss of ten percent is a little bit troublesome for me. What you will see with the course one ICS, again, is ten students, but we were able to double the percentage of students who are on or above level there. In grade seven ELA, this is one of the positive things that we're going to be looking through. When you're looking at the scale score from May to January, you're going to see a nice jump in each of the areas with the exception of um one of our, uh two of our subgroups in there. But if you look at the percentage of students who are on or above level in May versus now, that's a real positive improvement that we're seeing. So we're, uh trajectory is moving in the right direction. If we look at our instructional reading level, that's telling us something very similar to the last slide that we talked about the scale score. So again, this is going to be our typical growth that we're seeing for grade seven ELA. Our grade seven math, we saw a little bit of a dip again in the scale score for total population, Gen Ed, and Special Ed. Um, so this is again, we're going from twenty-six percent of our students, which is not good to begin with, for our uh on or above level to a nine point seven. And again, I broke it down into the courses so that if you look through the courses, even our pre-ado students gains only slightly there. But what's more, this is our single accelerated, um we went from maybe four percent of our students to forty-six percent of our students that are successful there. So I would say there's a regression in grade seven math. And if you recall from last year, grade seven is where we had some um positive um growth in the seventh graders last year. And I don't have Algebra one on that slide because I'm saving the advanced math for our last slide. For grade eight ELA, you're going to see again, great, you know, nice growth for the scale score from May until January. And then you're going to see, some people are going to say this is flat growth from the percentage of students on or above to, from May till January. I'm going to say that this is consistent growth or um typical growth because of these students are growing that year within the timeframe. And if you go, come back to that slide, what you'll see is the advanced um ELA, ninety-two percent came in on or above, and we're at ninety-three percent. And that's what you would typically expect when you're looking at them accelerated. Um, grade eight IRL, you're going to see again, something very similar to the scale score. So in grade seven and eight, the um scale score and the instructional reading level were pretty much um matching. Grade eight math, I want to caution you, if you look at this, it says course three, it's forty-two percent of our population in eighth grade are in course three. Cause we do have Algebra one and we do have geometry. So these numbers um are, don't tell the whole story for eighth grade math. Um, we had a concern last year in course three. I'm going to say this concern still is here. Um, so we, though we're aligned to this, when we go back and we're look at the scale score from May until January in the next slide, we have not recovered from our summer slide. If you look at the grade, grade eight math for total population, in May, we were at a seven sixty-three. We had a summer slide to seven nineteen. We have barely increased from September to January and not even close to picking up the, um where we were in last May. The more alarming thing is we have fifteen percent of our student population who are in course three, who were above level, on or above in May, we're down to one percent in there. Our middle school advanced math, geometry is an anomaly for us to be able to look through because we don't have a STAR scale score to say, here's the predictability for the state assessment because there are not enough students who take the um geometry. But what I can say to you is that a hundred percent of our students who are in geometry right now passed the Algebra one assessment um for last year. And they are on target for doing fairly well for this year. Our Algebra eight and Algebra seven, so I put it Algebra eight and seven just so we make the differential difference. Eighth graders, which is a single acceleration, and seventh grade, which is a double acceleration. So if I go to grade Algebra seven, you're going to see last year when they tested in May, ninety-six percent of those students were on or above level. And are, right now, they're at eighty percent. So my hope is that over the next few months, we're going to be able to bring that back up there. The more concerning is our Algebra eight students, which is our single accelerated, have gone from seventy-six percent of our students on or above to forty-six percent. So I don't want to sit here and say to you that, oh, our accelerated students are doing great. It's our course one, course two, course three. We have some work that we have to do throughout on some of this. So I just gave through a whole lot of numbers at you. I didn't throw things at you that, you know, for a couple of them, were really positive. But so my thing to it, to the supervisors is, so what are we doing? We know we're in trouble in some areas. What are we doing? Because we're not going to sit here and just admire um the data. We've got to make sure that we're moving it. So um each of them are going to come up here and just give you a little blurb. So some of you have, if you have the PowerPoint up for yourself, the PDF, you're going to see some of these things in here. Um Christine, who is our K two supervisor, was not able to make it tonight. So I'm just going to go through a little bit of what she has shared that she's doing. So I asked um the supervisor to do two things. Like what are some of the adjustments we had to make knowing that we, or some of our areas um are not growing the way we need? And then what are our, what are the intentional skills, programs um that we are putting into place that is a reason for growth in those areas? So what they shared in the K two is that where there were areas for um a lack of growth or not quite typical growth, um they have been working through focused PDs and meetings to um, within writing, to be able to strengthen the practice and instruction. They implemented uh phonemic awareness program, HEGARDY. So in the K two, where we saw that growth, we really attribute a lot of that to the fidelity in which HEGARDY is being practiced in the K two buildings. Um, there were quarterly meetings with BSI teams to look through data and discuss um any students who are in need of support so that they do it in small chunks and it's not a lifelong BSI. And then they're leveraging um two of our programs to remediate some of the skills in our students. And then the, finally, they're looking at small group structure, structures, as well as individual conferences between the student and the teacher to be able to um target specific instruction and needs for our students. Some of the things that have been put into place that have shown some of the growth, um Christine talks about some of them are anecdotal at this point. But we talked about the targeted um differentiated instruction and then HEGARDY. And again, we're going to attribute HEGARDY because we've seen some really good growth in kindergarten for there. And then um Christine says within the math, the Envision program has increased the rigor and the expectations that our teachers are using and therefore our uh students are rising to that occasion.
It's good to see everybody. Kevin Weiss, I'm the supervisor for three five. I just want to start off that. And really thanks Sandy for this presentation because she doesn't allow us as supervisors to just, we do these STAR tests and that's it. She asks us these pointed questions all the time to make sure that we're providing programs for our students to make sure that this data is more than just numbers on a sheet of paper, that it's actually leading to programming. So the first thing is after these January assessments, the building teams and myself, we met one on one with teachers to really get an understanding of how we're going to support our students moving from January to the end of the year. So if there's any shortcomings, are there material resources we need? Are there other things that we can help to support them? Uh, one of the things that we should understand though is that independent reading, uh I think it was Richard Ellington said, that when you read independently, it builds vocabulary comprehension and it helps close literacy gaps. So one of the things that we're doing is we did a accelerated words reading contest for both of our buildings to have a winner at third, fourth, and fifth grade in each building for the most words read because we really want to establish a culture where independent reading is what we do. Um, we also uh enhanced our buddy reading program that's currently running now between our third and fifth grade students uh to ensure that reading fluency and comprehension is a part of it. Uh, we've had after school PDs uh making sure that the reading, writing connection is there. Because similar to independent reading, the more students see that there's a reading, writing connection, we can improve vocabulary comprehension as well as making sure using whisper phones and things like that, that the writing that the students are doing reads fluently. We've also had central office PDs because uh we have numerous students who are coming from households where English is not the first language. So we want to make sure that we have language objectives and background knowledge to help support them through our lessons. Some of the things that are working, uh that we want to keep making sure that that growth continues is our, our fourth grade Title I programs. Uh, these are for students who are considerably behind our pacing and uh grade level expectations, so they can make accelerated growth. We also have math and reading enrichment programs for students who are significantly ahead of the pacing. So when you saw that data and you see that certain students are already, are at some of the top, I guess it's a five on the NJSLA, that they're not backsliding and we can keep them and appropriately uh provide them rigor. We also have math exemplars in our math program now to make sure that our students are being presented with and working through multi-step word problems because that often is a issue for some of our students. So I thank you for your time. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just want to go over some of the things that we've seen over the course of the past couple of years. In Special Ed, well, everywhere, we noticed last year that our third graders were coming in much lower than we had seen them come in before. Some of that was uh due to post pandemic, some of that was just due to students coming in overall lower. So what we started last year was uh bringing in Orton Gillingham. We realized that our three five team did not have what they needed to teach these kids what they needed. We were teaching them reading where their skills were here, we were teaching them here. So with that Orton Gillingham, bringing in that, last year, we eased it in. This year, what we did, last year, as we eased it in, everyone went for training, including myself, to make sure that I knew what I was supervising. But then for each part of the lesson plan, we gave them professional development. This year was the first year where we fully implemented it. And if you look at the, at the data at the three five level, you'll see that showed where the full implementation of Orton Gillingham this year actually limited a lot of the summer slide in the three to five. And what, what was happening is grade three, the STAR reading, which is what most of those scores were based on, including the grade two, the STAR reading makes an assumption that you are a reader. Although it is a level test, it does not go down to the phonemic level, which is why a lot, a lot of our third grade Special Ed students weren't even generating a real score on it. So it was hard to read that data, but that's a universal screener that we read, that we utilize. So what we also started doing was implementing the I Ready and the DIBELS assessment. And those are really showing that growth at the three, five level. And with the STAR reading, you're starting to see the fourth and fifth grade uh special education students really catching up because that's when that reading is catching up for them. So that is what we're doing at the three, five level. It's really that Orton Gillingham approach that has really helped us. We have a weekly lesson plan template, so everybody's on the same page. That's what we're trying to do. Just create a universal protocol for that reading instruction. At the K two level, uh we've seen a lot of struggles with behavior. Uh, we're trying to help get students to self-regulate themselves so we can, again, continue more with instruction there. What we plan on doing at the K two level is the pushes that we've done at the three, five level have produced fruit. Now we're looking to bring more of that at the K two level to kind of look at what can we bring down there doing increase and better engage students in that phonics instruction. And along with that, again, we're just using, using different strategies. Uh, a lot of these are things like writing at the three, five level. We were kind of doing separate. Now we're making sure that it, that they're learning to decode their words. So now we're putting that encoding piece, that writing piece, and tying that to the Orton Gillingham instruction. We're trying to tie all that instruction together so everything's meaningful. We're not, we're not teaching things in a silo on their own, but really making sure that everything's integrated together. Do you have any questions now or again? Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry, I, I, we were talking about Orton Gillingham. What Orton Gillingham really is, is multisensory teaching. So that's where we're bringing in a lot of these sensory tools. So when we're teaching the reading, that's, it's a lot more tactile. And if you look, even in the, in the summer slides where it's limiting them, it's because there's a deeper understanding. Kids are participating in the learning. So things like, uh, one of the things is they're writing, they're writing in sand. But as they do it, they're saying it, they're feeling it, they're They're saying the letters, saying the sounds, and everything's getting tied together. So those are a lot of the other pieces that we are bringing in. Then we're also now bringing more to the K-two level. Again, we started with three-five, but it's now moving backwards too. Do you want me to feel questions now or?
Good evening, everyone. So in the ESL K-five world, in our K-two program, we have an intervention program to support our lowest-performing students. In Spanish, it is called S I L, Sistema de la Intervención, which is an intervention system. That's what it means in English. And those students have an opportunity to work with a bilingual interventionist two times a day. Our classroom teachers have two resources called Camino Imposso to support the K-two students with phonemic awareness, phonics, blending sounds. And we are also doing the Hegarty Spanish program in our kindergarten bilingual classes. In three-five, one of our third grade teachers last summer, our third grade ESL teacher, the counterpart to a bilingual teacher, went for Orton Gillingham training. And this summer, the other ESL teachers in the buildings, both the GNR and PLD, will go for Orton Gillingham training. The multifaceted tactile experience that works for special education also works very well for second language learners. We split a third grade class at the Perry El Drew School with a new bilingual teacher. And those class sizes are now sixteen each instead of twenty-four each. We have done walkthroughs. We've met with teachers. We've had data meetings. And also there's been some meeting with the APs to talk about attendance because attendance is such a critical component to student success. Our PDs have been focused on teaching writing to multilingual students and the science of reading.
Good evening. In grades six through eight, I have a lot to say. I did attach at the top up here. You can click on and see additional information to what I'm going to present now. But just for the salient points, we based a lot of our analysis on quarterly data. Hold on, I'm so sorry. Based on quarterly data review that we did with teachers in late January and early February. That included an overview of some newer programs we had bought in in November, trained the staff in, put into play for the second quarter. And that included Lexia Core Five and Power Up. We continue to use Rewards, which is an automaticity and decoding program, expanding it out to include paragraph-level comprehension at the eighth grade level this year. So early returns are showing us that we've made gains with our most at-risk students utilizing those programs. We're still refining how we're integrating those programs, the amount of time spent on those programs, and looking at them really for their hybridability, that they are not just digital programs that are giving children practice, but that our teachers are well-trained at the middle school level to support decoding, encoding, comprehension, and exercises in multi-syllabic decoding. That kind of branches us out to the next group that Sandy presented, who are showing some gains, albeit minimal, in vocabulary. And we've really been stressing morphology and explicit systemic vocabulary, not incidental where they're reading and picking up additional words, but really looking to understand the deeper value of words as they're plowing through comprehensive, complex text. From there, we also saw that our highest-level students are flatlining. And we looked at this less as a reading problem. We've done a good job, I feel, matching the students. We've done a lot of work with the staff to match to complex texts, high-interest texts, and texts of varied genre, which really exposes them to the written word in various forms. Some are focusing on words, some are focusing on structure. They're getting a lot at the higher end with that focus. However, we also saw in our writing assessments, which was not part of the data you saw here explicitly. It was in the NJSLS, but not in the STAR. We're seeing that our kids are kind of plateauing. A lot of this is coming from the writing modes. We have been largely teaching genre-based writing. We are pushing back into six traits to ensure that they have those foundational writing skills and then coupling them with unique genre elements. The other item that we noticed in our data review was the overuse of formulaic writing constructors. These are incredibly helpful for our students who are struggling or are emergent writers. But as they climb up in their proficiency, they need to have opportunities for compositional risk and taking that risk and really kind of developing it. To that end, the teachers have been trained and looking at data specifically in works reviews. We look at student work. We do not put identifiers on it. We put it underneath the microscope. And we examine that student work to see what it tells us about how we need to fine-tune our teaching and how we need to fine-tune experiences for the different levels of our students. In all of our data review, we focus on the tiered intervention supports with our TI. What are we doing for our most at-risk tier three? What are we doing for students who are kind of on the border? Our after-school intervention this go-around for quarter three was students who presented as doing very well in their class, but they're presenting with gaps in their literacy. So we really went with an eight-week program that really gave them not only test-taking strategies, but opportunities based on evidence tables that we reviewed, based on student work we reviewed, to really ramp that up and address subtle but important stylistic changes in their writing. Finally, in terms of program development, bringing in the Core Lexia and the Power Up, we pulled the teachers offline. We did an evaluation of the digital program. We shared lessons that are being given in guided reading and sustained structural support. And we are building a library alongside the digital to ensure that students are getting contact time with the teacher and that that is systemic, it's progressive, and it's a priority as they plan for literacy instruction.
I think I have covered everything.
Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, so looking at six through eight math, we kind of came at this knowing that this was an area for growth this year. Some of the things that happened from looking at last year's data and moving forward is the release of new state standards and modified standards for math. So over the summer, we revised some of our curriculum based on those new standards. And in the process, we also restructured some of those curriculas so that we felt that the instruction was more aligned with the progression from sixth to eighth, sixth to seventh to eighth grade. With the focus on new curriculum, additional teachers in the six-through-eight math level, and a recognition that this was an area for growth, we started the year with meetings with each of the individual sixth-through-eighth-grade math teachers, talking about their student data, looking at where their students were starting at the beginning of the year and pointing a focus to those students that might be ready to be enriched or be provided with enriched resources and also looking at those students that we had concerns with. We started our Title I programs a little bit earlier this year to try and provide support in our first phase for those students that we recognized would be starting the school year a little bit behind. In our Phase Two, which is currently running, we're looking to identify those students that are just shy of meeting expectations, that could use a little additional support. And then for our third phase, which is not launched yet, we are looking at identifying those students that are showing regression and trying to find a way to kind of scoop them up, keep them engaged through the end of the year so that ideally that summer slide will be less for them. After the second STAR testing date, which is in January, we are, are and have organized a second round of data meetings with teachers to really look at those students that are demonstrating regression and ask the students to, ask the teachers to identify what they've been doing for those particular students, identify if they even acknowledged or have recognized that these students needed some extra support. One of the things that you may have seen is some concerns about our sixth grade and seventh grade pre-algebra data and some concerns about whether or not those students are regressing. And again, putting a focus on those advanced programs where we started the year with a focus on our core general ed programs in course one, course two, and course three. So reminding teachers that we have to pay attention to where our students are and what our students need, not just in our regular grade-level courses, but across all of our different courses. In terms of teacher practices within the classroom, teachers are expected to engage in conferencing with students, not just about standardized data, but also about students' goals and helping students identify what it is that they need to work on to support progress. Teachers have been asked quarterly to reflect not just on data from their grade books, but also to look for cohesion between the standardized data and how students are doing in the classroom, to hold them accountable to STAR data, to hold them accountable to common assessment data, data that we collect from Alex, which is the secondary platform that we use to support students in the classroom, and look to see if there is commonalities across that data. And again, leaning beyond just the STAR numbers that are represented in the data spreadsheets that you saw, but going into Renaissance reports that disaggregate that number into individual areas that teachers can work with those students on. So expecting teachers to kind of go through that data on a regular basis and holding them accountable to address those areas with their students. In addition, we have a staff developer for six-through-eight math. And we have provided the staff developer with weekly or bi-weekly, depending on how much time we want her to spend focusing on these areas, to work with the teachers, to provide additional resources for enrichment and support, support teachers in integrating additional strategies to provide enrichment and support for our students. One of those supports that we're looking for our teachers to use consistently is the use of small group strategies within the classroom to make sure they're pulling those students who need additional support on a regular basis to provide that for them, but also pulling small groups for students that might need enrichment and might need a little bit of teacher support in those enrichment environments. And again, as a result of the data meetings that we're having with teachers about mid-year data, making sure teachers are aware of those students that are demonstrating regression across this standardized data and making sure that they are being held accountable to what it is that they are doing to better support these teachers based on some of those expected strategies and resources that we've presented.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about six-to-eight special education. Some of the things that we're doing to work towards growth for our students. One thing is meeting with teachers to discuss the student data. Another is holding professional development for the math teachers on engagement strategies, incorporating a lesson in class on STAR assessment. We want the students to understand why it's important, why they have to take it, what does it tell them, just to make it more meaningful for the students. Another thing we are doing is reinforcing and incorporating the basic foundational math skills within our lessons for OCR and LMD. We are reiterating strategies to incorporate and promote reading across the curriculum. And something new that was just started this year was that the special education teachers are now meeting with students once marking period to set goals and conference with the students. And with that, they are now incorporating STAR-focused skills into their goal setting to make it more meaningful for them. And then that's how we're also gaining growth. We're incorporating all of the things that I just spoke about before. And we're just reinforcing and reiterating all of those things. And we are, have a strong focus on our conferencing and goal setting.
Good evening. I'm going to talk about ESL six, eight. So adjustments we've made for data lack of growth, focused walkthroughs in the sheltered classes to collect some anecdotal data on how the teachers are co-teaching with their content pairs. We've incorporated Lexia English into the ESL classroom to improve their speaking. Not just their speaking, their listening. It helps build confidence for the students when they are moving around in their content classes to participate and speak in class. We participated in after-school programs. We have been focusing on access test prep. But we also pulled a group of students who are beginning and emerging to help support additionally after-school with their language development. These are students who are new to District DSL one, Level two. And we've seen some success there. Some of the programs that we've done and we've incorporated into this year, we've really focused on stations in the classroom. This allowed our teachers to have small group instruction, push into small groups and help them with areas where they need to improve on. We've also had a deep dive of creating rubrics to help them with assessing the students. But not just creating the rubrics aligned to our WIDA language development standards, but also using them to show students and conference with them. This is where you are. This is where we want you to be. We've used AI for our teachers, not the students, to help make some of the content in the classroom more accessible for the students to meet the standard. We've helped writing PDs to help our teachers explicitly teach writing to our multilingual learners. And we've done data dives with the sheltered content classes, creating targeted plans for struggling students in the class. So if we've seen there's a group of students who are struggling, why are they struggling? What can we do to support them? And we'd just like to mention that we're really excited about the access test this year to see if there's growth. And we really can't measure their language development fully without those results.
I know we threw a lot at you, both data-wise as well as some of the areas that we are working through. So I'm not sure if you have questions, if you want to mull it over and think through it. And we go through questions next meeting, however you want to work through. Mark, I don't know if you have a preference or?
If board members have any initial thoughts, questions, feel free. We definitely can revisit this, obviously, beyond tonight.
When do the access test results come out?
June, July. Right, June, July? Am I right there?
Yep. So we'll have them over the summer or in September?
Yes, absolutely.
I have one more question. So Chris, so we are bringing the OG down to, Orton Gillingham down to the K-two level. When do we expect that to happen?
So did, did, we still have foundations down there. So the original plan was?
Excuse me.
Chris, can you come to the mic?
Sorry.
Good. Now I get your pen too. The original plan, when we started training teachers, we started training three-five and K-two. But we already have Wilson foundations at the K-two level. So it was like, do we want to change that? I felt like it was going to be too much of a shift. So I wanted to see what was going on with OG first. We've already brought down Orton Gillingham's strategies. And you need to realize, the Wilson, the Wilson foundations is based on Orton Gillingham. They're all multisensory. But Wilson foundation is a little bit more scripted. So it doesn't, sometimes it gets a little bit robotic. So we've already started infusing some of the Orton Gillingham, like the red words and using the screens and using the crayons. We're already putting that down at the K-two level. We already started there. But the goal is not necessarily to have everyone doing OG at the K-two level, but to have all our special ed teachers at the K-two level doing Wilson foundations with all the OG tools. So we'd still be following the scope and sequence of foundations. The thing with Wilson at the three-five level is we're looking to fill in gaps. We don't really need to change the scope and sequence of the foundations program. We just need to make it more meaningful. So we've already started it, but there's going to be a bigger push next year. Even, I've had K-two teachers coming to the three-five. Even, I've had K-two teachers coming to the three, five meetings that we're holding. So they're trying to see a little bit more. I have our multisensory reading specialist pushing in usually about once a week at the K-two level, but they're spending most of the time at the three, five level. So our, our goal is to shift that next year and really push that at the K-two level so we can start seeing at the K-two what we saw at three, five.
Okay. And that'll be in the gen ed, not just the RTI, that'll be in the gen ed class?
I'm talking about special ed.
No, okay.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
So part of what Chris talked about is the foundations and Wilson really is based off of Orton Gillingham. The reason the three, five came into play is we didn't have any type of phonics program or anything to be able to fill those gaps. So that's what they're going through. So a lot of the strategies that Chris is talking about, some of the hands-on weren't being implemented in K-two. And that's some of the things that he's looking to bring there. Until we get our final results from K-two, I'm not going to tell you that we're going to switch anything. I'm going to tell you we're open to those things, but we don't want to just throw the baby out with the bathwater if what we're doing is working for our gen ed students. So we're just trying to go through, look at and all that.
Tina, just to help you kind of understand something, when we started doing that, a lot of teachers became confused. It's really the same thing, but when we brought, when I sent some K-two teachers for Orton Gillingham training, they came back and they're like, Chris, what am I supposed to do? Am I supposed to do Wilson? Am I supposed to do, am I supposed to do foundations or O...? So it took a little bit of a bridge. Now those teachers are like, thank you for sending me. But there is a learning curve there. So that's something that, that's kind of why I wanted to rein it in a little bit so we can roll it out a little slower to ease that learning curve.
Okay, I see. As long as we're bringing the, the essence of Orton Gillingham.
Yes.
Which we already have.
Yes, that's...
That's great. Let's see where we end up. I only ask these questions because I know like, three to five, once they're past that third grade, they're no longer learning to read per se. We're in the reading to learn area.
That's where...
So I always feel the earlier the better, the more tools our teachers have.
So that's where we had the Wilson reading system in three, five, which was for our lowest students. But the problem with the Wilson reading system is that it follows a book, like it follows a system. So if I came in and the only thing I needed help on was R-controlled vowels, I would need to start with short vowels and I wouldn't see what I really needed help with for two years. And that wasn't working for us. We needed something where it was more prescriptive and that's where the Orton Gillingham is helping us.
That's my second concern because it's not individualized.
And that's, and at the K-two level...
You're talking with the group.
At the K-two level, we don't need it to be though, because we have that scope and sequence. We're learning everything at that level. At the three, five, that's where we need it really prescriptive, but we need all those things so we're speaking a common language from pre-K all the way up through fifth grade.
Thanks.
Hi, Sandy, I have a question. Two years back, we had the assessment and there were a couple of grades that were a little bit not meeting the benchmark. Now comes, and now I'm seeing kindergarten through eighth, we're far behind.
So kindergarten is growing. Kindergarten showed, showed the growth. So with the Hegarty reading program, so I'm going to say kindergarten showing. And then there are some, some of those pockets that we saw that they are growing. So I don't, I mean, I want to say, because everything we showed, we talked about how we're growing, sometimes within our scale score, but it's not growing to the extent that it should be if it's called the typical growth, so they stay on level. So I don't want to say we're not growing. We're not growing to the level that we should be growing.
So should we like looking to some other districts, similar district to try to learn some skill set? I know you're doing your in-house preparation and teaching, teaching our teachers and to, you know, we have a certain demographic in our district that needs attention. And is there somewhere we can, you know, ask and find out because this is not working? It's been two years and the numbers have declined. And I'm, I'm just, I just don't understand what are we missing here? Is it staffing, skills, or some items we need? What do we need to at least meet, meet the minimum requirement? Now you're giving me score at a low starting kindergarten. Before we had, because it was because of COVID, our kids were not doing well from six to seven to eight. Now you're telling me the kindergarten, I have been far behind. How will they succeed in high school if they're not even meeting the minimum requirement now?
So Trudy, I hear a hundred percent of what I'm going to ask of the board is we're going to give us till May when the next set of data comes through. And then we're ongoing to challenge that we do make some massive improvements because this can't happen. And for those who have been around for it, we made some serious adjustments in the past that have brought this up. We may have to go back there, but give me, and I'm going to ask you to give, and I say me, when I say me, I'm talking about my team. Give us until May's assessment and then I will come back to you with a plan if we're not seeing things where they should be.
Thank you.
But I'm not going to sit here and tell you what you're seeing is not accurate. Not going to say that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then we'll move on to our superintendent's report. Thank you, Sandy.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. I do want to thank our team, curriculum team for writing an update. Obviously, we are collectively working hard to move the needle with our students and that's a continuous process and we will not, we will not stop that. Couple of updates for this evening. I just want to begin with some positive news. Just want to highlight a student from the high school. Each year, sponsored by the Mercer County School Boards Association, there's an unsung hero. Each school, each high school is asked to submit the name of a senior, current senior, who they believe kind of makes the school better. And this is typically someone who may not find themselves in the more traditional pathway towards recognition, but, but someone who nevertheless may have faced some obstacles along the way or deals with some unique challenges, but despite that, still perseveres. So definitely wanted to congratulate a high school student who was recognized last week, Ayanna Vince Oates. She was recognized that, Westminster Plains Borough is the high school where they have recognition last Thursday evening, along with the other students within the county. But definitely wanted to congratulate her again and acknowledge her work and also the, the staff members of the high school who support her. Rose Brown, her assistant principal, was the individual who nominated her at the county level. Our student representatives mentioned Chicago High School musical. I didn't know the statistics they shared tonight regarding the ticket sales, the, the, the number of seats that were filled. But I did have the opportunity to attend the Friday, the Friday showing and I was thoroughly impressed. It's been a consistent theme for us. Obviously, our visual performing arts program district-wide is something that we continue to really see as a highlight and appreciate the board's support in, in the arts program. But yes, Chicago was definitely a success. For me, it just symbolized a combination of tremendous student talent. Obviously, three months plus of dedicated preparation and the exceptional guidance and coaching from our exemplary educators. So I just want to extend kudos to Mr. Camps and the other directors, as well as the amazing Heistown High School crew and cast. Just a reminder regarding the New Jersey School Climate Survey. If you recall, we were in the process of utilizing the survey this year through a partnership with Rutgers University and the New Jersey Department of Education. It enables us to get a pulse on what students are feeling regarding their school environments and their experiences within our schools, each of our schools. This is actually a grade three through 12 survey. We've engaged our students in that process and we're getting, in the, the next phase, we'll be looking at that data. And this is compared to not only students within the East Windsor Regional School District, but we also have an opportunity to look at some of those domains and get a comparison across the state. Another component related to the survey is getting feedback from our staff. And the third component is the caregiver survey. So we did, I guess, for the past two to three weeks, schools have communicated the survey or provided the link. Last, I want to say last week, we provided, we provided the link within the weekly update. And I believe this week we're closing it out. This will be the last week that it'll be available to complete it. So if you haven't already, if you're a parent, please provide that feedback. Obviously, your input will help us kind of assess our strengths and identify areas for growth and improvement to enhance the overall school climate. At our last board meeting, provided a brief update regarding the progress related to the security vestibule at the high school. This has been one of the, it's been a little slow, to be quite honest with you, but we did have a meeting today with our district architect, as well as high school administration, also Paul Todd, business administrator. We met with the contractor who is in the final stages of the project, which is a, just a positive thing. So just to kind of give folks a sense of what we, we engaged in, we used the former principal's office, which is now an assistant principal space, converted that space, installed an exterior entry point and created a secured, security space within there. So the good news is that we did have the opportunity to finalize the assistant principal space that was converted, as well as the secretary connected to the assistant principal. So they moved back in last week. Looking at the security side of things and the vestibule appears that, based on the meeting today, April fourth is the anticipated completion date, along with inspections that will need to occur. So we look forward to being able to at least either, either not, if not prior to spring break, definitely post-spring break, there'll be the implementation of the security vestibule at the high school. I have some unfortunate news and some of you may be familiar with this just based on some information that was communicated via the news. And this is kind of developing information, so I'm sharing this right now based on factual information that I'm aware of. Obviously, as, as we gather more information, we'll make that more known. But we did receive some sad news regarding a motor vehicle accident that took place on Friday evening. It involved four graduates of Heistown High School. Unfortunately, two, two of the individuals within, within the motor vehicle accident unfortunately passed away. So Joshua Davis, class of 2021, and also Aaron Davis, class of 2019, unfortunately did not survive the accident. Their brothers, Benjamin and Nathaniel, both class of 2024, fortunately did survive. So obviously, our thoughts and prayers with the Davis family during this extremely difficult time. Quick update regarding the governor's educator of the year recipients. If you recall, last month, we, we celebrated those individuals here during the February 24th, I believe, board meeting. I mentioned during that recognition that the county was in the process of looking to kind of renew, rekindle an opportunity to celebrate these individuals at the county level. So we, we, I'm going back a few years, but I want to say at least five years ago. This used to be an annual tradition, but things, things changed unfortunately and then it kind of faded away. So we're in the process of collaborating with other districts, as well as the county office. And we are scheduled to celebrate these folks at the county level so they have the opportunity to be recognized with their county colleagues. That will be at May first at the College of New Jersey. Invitations went out last week, so definitely looking forward to taking another opportunity just to recognize the talented educators within our district. As our student representatives indicated, March 31st, next Monday, schools will be closed. Next board meeting won't be until April 28th. So prior to that, we will have spring break. Friday, March 11th, I'm sorry, Friday, April 11th, will be an early dismissal. Students will return to school on Monday, April 21st. As a reminder, spring break will serve as a homework-free holiday. So therefore, students will not be assigned work to complete during spring break and they will not return to school on Monday to a quiz or a test. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We'll now move on to our first opportunity for board member comments. Any members of the board wish to speak? Hello. I just want to thank everybody for the presentation today. And I also wanted to say how thoroughly I enjoyed Chicago and congratulate everybody involved.
Hi. We are having our second science symposium at the Heistown Cafeteria on Saturday from nine to one. Can you please come, you're all invited to come and support our kids who are participating in attempting building science projects. They are starting from kindergarten to eighth graders. So please drop by, everyone, if you can, to support our amazing kids. And that's from nine to one on Saturday at Heistown Cafeteria, right here. Thank you so much.
Any other comments?
I have to say that Chicago was amazing and thank you to everybody that helped put that on and the super talented kids who were part of it. And anybody in the community that doesn't make it a point to get out to see any of the performing arts programs or any of the extracurriculars that the kids participated in here is missing out on a really great part of this community, so.
I second those thoughts, Michael. In fact, I didn't have time, but I kind of frowned down upon myself that I don't sit down with the district calendar and pull out all of those events. So if I find that still too difficult, I might rely on some help from administration to help us gather all of those dates throughout the year so that board members are more able to attend them if we know about them in advance. Because I do like to go out to the events and I was also able to see Chicago. Thankfully, I got to see it twice, so I got to see both casts. So I commend them all for their hard work. So any other comments? Okay, there being none, we'll move to our first opportunity for public comment. Any members of the public wish to make any statements or addresses? Okay, there being none, we will move into executives. Oh, there is. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just didn't... So if you can please approach the podium, please state your name and address and write it on the clipboard next to it. And public comments are limited to three minutes of time per our policy, district policy.
Excuse me, sir. Could you just hit the button to turn the mic on?
Thanks, Andy, for helping out.
Thank you, Cindy. All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Barry Greenstein and I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I come before you not just as a taxpayer, but as someone deeply invested in the success and integrity of our schools and our students. After looking at the 2025 to 26 budget presentation, I'm concerned about the level of transparency and accessibility and how the information has been presented to the public. While the slideshow provides very high-level figures and percentage changes, it seems to lack the detail necessary for community members to understand how decisions are being made, especially when it comes to administrative spending, personnel changes, and capital improvements. For example, the budget presentation notes a 2.6% increase in the general fund from last year, which is the highest in the past four years, but there is no breakdown showing exactly which programs or departments are seeing increases or cuts. Without a line, item, view, or explanation of trade-offs, it's hard for the public to evaluate whether this budget reflects our shared priorities. Additionally, it's unclear how stakeholder input factored into the development of this budget. The presentation highlights strategic plan goals, yet there's no mention of whether community surveys, forums, or advisory input during the budgeting process took place. How do we know this budget truly reflects the needs of students, staff, and taxpayers? Transparency isn't just about presenting numbers. It's about context, communication, and accountability. I ask and urge the board to consider publishing a more detailed version of the proposed budget prior to the approval, which I believe is April 28th. Prior to the approval, which I believe is April twenty-eighth. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to approach the podium, comment? Okay, there being none, we will move on to our executive session and we will be about fifteen, twenty minutes. Thank you.
Okay, our meeting is back in session. Um, we will now move on to old business. Um, so let's see, our committee meetings. Did the curriculum, no, I'm sorry, the policy committee meet this evening? They did? Okay. Do we want to?
It was exciting.
It was exciting. Do we want to do an update now, a summary, or?
Okay, we are talking about the policy committee meeting earlier. All right, I'm. Just back on the board after a while. The, um, board, um, in the past year or so has been conducting an audit of our policies. Including a review of all of our existing policies, including those that go back, um, ten, twenty years since they've been revised. So part of that, um, review has to do with a, um, use our service, our, um, policy service. Strauss estimated to do an audit of all of the policies to show how our policy manual is in conformance with the state code. So there are some markings on a grid that they've provided that indicate those that require some updates. But the committee as a whole, um, has also been conducting a page-by-page policy, uh, policy review. Of everything in the policy manual to see what we may want to look at, what we might want to schedule for further discussion. Or those that might be okay, and maybe we just actually have a policy update to indicate that the board has reviewed it more recently than two thousand and four. Or, uh, earlier as some of them indicate. Uh, we also talked about that process being, um, a, an alert, a series of alerts. That our policy vendor provides us to update us on changes in state rules. that our policy vendor provides us to update us on changes in state rules, uh, regulations, mandates. And, uh, we have a part-time employee in the district who helps us to understand the impact of those, um, uh, updates on existing policies and schedule a review whereby we come up with, uh, new recommended or mandated language for those policies. And one of the policies that has come up for review, separate from that audit, is a, uh, policy seventy-five-ten, use of school facilities. We are having to look at the rates that are very old for custodial, um, and other overhead, uh, factors during the u- use of our facilities by community organizations. So, that will be coming forward, and... To the committee, to, to the board as a whole, we have some review of, um, some specific policies for tonight. Those having to do with, um, memorandum of agreement between educational law enforcement officials and some other general policy and regulation updates. And our next meeting is in about a month, the end of April, where we will be reviewing our results from our, um, own committee members' review of the audit list provided by Strauss S. May. Any other comments? Mark, Mike?
Paul, can we have that changed on the little grid here? To, to show that, reflect that April twenty-second date, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Which way is that?
Under the old business, A, twenty-twenty-five committee meetings, we have the little grid, and policy shows the next date as being July fourteenth, not April twenty-second. So, perhaps that was added in as an additional, additional meeting. So, if we can update that whole box there to reflect all the meetings, that would be great. Did anyone have any questions? Okay, so then, any questions about the twenty-five, twenty-six budget? Okay, no ques- no questions on the budget?
Just, uh, just, could we reiterate again what the process is for review and next steps?
Next steps, uh, for the board will be, uh, April twenty-eighth, where we have our public adoption.
And that's gonna be posted as the formal public hearing?
That is the formal public hearing, on correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then, the budget adoption will be on May twelfth. That's our anticipated date to adopt the budget?
No, that'll be April twenty-eighth.
That'll be, we'll adopt it, we'll review and adopt next month.
Well, we've been reviewing it for a little while now, we continue to review it up until April twenty-eighth, when, uh, the board will formally adopt that.
Okay, thank you.
One more, I'm sorry. In addition to the anticipated loss of some state aid, have we looked at contingency plans for potential loss of Title I monies?
Um, as right now, um, you know, we've received, uh, some word from the, uh, State Department of Ed, that right now, everything is planned to go as, you know, status quo. Even when you hear, you know, some of the, you know, talking heads on TV, I think everyone's saying that Title I IDA looks like worst-case scenario could be shifted to another department. So, I don't, I don't think we've heard that, you know, Title I or IDA funding is up for, to be cut.
I, I think for this upcoming year, it appears that we, we will be okay. I think the concern will be subsequent years, and I think there will be some, I think when the dust settles, we'll have a better sense of how we prepare for next, the following year's budget.
Being optimistic here, uh, I did hear or read about, and I neglected to pull my items, to actually pull the, the laws off my printer, but there are some new funding being put forth for high-impact tutoring grants, continuous funding for literacy initiatives, and continued funding for computer science programs. Do, have we, do we know anything about those? Are we looking into that to apply for those state grants? I know it's not right at this level, but do we have any?
We, we did last year for the high-impact tutoring, we did that at the three-five level. So, I'm not familiar with what you're referring to, I think it's a continuation of that. We're still in the process of assessing the, the impact of the high-impact tutoring, just really in terms of like where we fit it. We incorporated some of that into the school day this year, so it'll be interesting to get a sense of, uh, as we move towards the end of the school year, whether or not we're looking to continue that. Because last year, we had adopted a before-school model, which has its challenges as well. Uh, but yeah, we, we, we definitely applied for that, and there was some carryover funding associated with that grant, that we could get some additional materials to support students, so we did pursue that. Uh, I will follow up on the other, the other things you referenced.
I'll, I'll send you, um, the, the information that I found also. One law was related to the O- Office of Learning Equity and Academic Recovery, and then there was another one for periodic screening at lit- for of literacy from the K through three level. Two laws coming in too. I don't know if they've been finalized, I, I think they, from what I read, they were, but I just found out about them yesterday, so I'm not well-versed in them.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the screening, the screening component. Uh, we already have a pretty robust process at the K-two level for screening, but I do believe this legislation has been put forth regarding that.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we will move on to our second opportunity for board member comments. Any members of the board have any questions?
Um, I'm just trying to find out about the Oprah request. They're requesting some time, I didn't understand, I thought we had provided that information already. So, what is up, you know, for you to go back to this, that's a lot of work and time-consuming on your part. So, I, I would like to understand, like, what's the next step for us to? I think we have thus provided everything that individual needed, so I'm just trying to find out what happened. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. That, uh, email that the board received, um, was a little confusing, to say the least, because the requester was combining a couple of Oprah requests. The timeline that they submitted was actually from a former Oprah request, which has, was satisfied and, and moved on from. The, I, I think the, uh, Requestor is a little upset that the, the Oprah request that they put in was rather large. And so, we, um, assessed a special service fee that we had, you know, the board had discussed, and I don't think that the, um, individual quite liked the response, I was quite honest with you. So, I think that's just what they were saying. Their request resulted in like twenty-five hundred emails, which would have to, um, be looked at individually, and just to make sure that there's nothing confidential in those items, and that's what people don't understand. There's a difference when you ask for a document, like our budget, like I just gave that to, that's not a problem. But when you ask for emails, someone has to sit there and look at them. There was another request, which you didn't hear about, where the, um, person asked for it, and it turned out to be like twenty-one thousand emails. And I can tell you, in that batch, there were attorney-client communications which have to be pulled. There would have been HIPAA information in those emails that would have had to been pulled. And a lot of times, there's duplicates where someone emails maybe someone in administration, and that gets kicked around a little bit, and then they start forwarding that email to their home address. So, you could have the same email, and there are four or five different times, in different fashions, a forward of a forward of a forward. So, sometimes you have to go all the way down into an email, and it's not just a ten-second, just let's take a look at. So, it is time-consuming, which is why we have, which by Oprah, by, you know, by their regulations, has this special service charge for those kind of things, so. So, emails is really quite a different ball than just asking for a document, because we just try to.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? I just wanted to bring up another thing I just found out about. Apparently, the city of Newark has been the first city in New Jersey to, um, expand their, um, voting for their local Board of Education to sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds. And I was wondering, being as civic-minded as we are, if that's something as a district we could consider doing here? We can table the discussion for later, because it may not be a yes or no answer, but...
I mean, conceptually, uh, I, I, I don't have an issue with that, and we'd have to just take a look at the parameters surrounding that, if we're permitted, permitted to do so. But I, I think that's definitely a discussion we can, um, pursue. And I think it further kind of highlights, you know, civic responsibility, but also, um, the education that undergirds that.
I look forward to hearing more about what's entailed, or researching myself in reporting back. If there's no other, um...
Just to follow up on that, is that, is that a November election, or is that one of the old April elections?
It didn't specify.
Tina, um, currently, we do not have a vote on the public budget. Is that what you were talking about? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, um, for Board of Education elections, um, Newark, I, I, they're just putting it into place. I assume it's for, I don't know what Newark, what their calendar is, if it's a November or an April election, but it's probably irrelevant. It's basically the, the township, or the city of Newark is coming forth saying, "We would like our sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds to be able to vote in the local Board of, uh, Educational Election." So, we could delve in further and find out what's entailed, I guess, because I just wanted to bring it to light, because I thought that was really interesting, and I think that's something would be, you know, really amazing to do in this district, to get them started on the right path. If there's no other board member comments, we'll move to our second opportunity for public comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, there being none, we will move on to item nine.
Mandated, mandated policies for second reading. A, policy twenty-two-hundred, curriculum content. B, policy thirty-one-sixty, physical examination. C, policy forty-one-sixty, physical examination. D, policy fifty-three-fifty, student suicide prevention. E, policy eighty-four-twenty, emergency and crisis situations. F, policy eighty-four-sixty-seven, firearms and weapons.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I did, I had a question, uh, when we did the first reading. Uh, I understand we went consolidating the item in, to summarize the policy twenty-two-hundred curriculum content, and you said we're just gonna synopse the fourteen bullet points and put it in these little paragraphs. But in the fourteen paragraph, they were also referring to other policy number on it. So, that would also be, I guess, put in that paragraph format as well? It was related to other items on it?
Yeah, so the, so the, the, a lot of the information on the existing policy was primarily outdated based on language. So, the fact that we're referring to New Jersey student learning standards, that's something that's been updated. And the, the, the bottom line is that, you know, the board, um, in order to provide a thorough and efficient education, you need to approve the adoption of new courses. You al- you also need to approve, um, curriculum, um, you know, if there are revisions to curriculum. And obviously, those, those courses or pathways to learning should be based on state standards. They also, they also need to be aligned. When you refer to other policies, the high school graduation requirement is another policy that needs to be, um, connected to that. So, you know, one of the things we had the board do, uh, last month, I believe, was approve the program of studies, which kind of serves as, you know, our coursework related to the high school. So, uh, it's, yeah, some of that older policy was just, uh, language cleanup, but also consolidation of process. But it doesn't reduce the board's impact or responsibility to approve curriculum and courses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Pull the board, please.
Miss Concepcion?
Yes.
Miss Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Labrie?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item ten?
Recommended policies for second reading. A, policy fifty-three-thirty-seven, service handles. B, policy ninety-one-eighty-one, volunteer athletic coaches and co-curricular activity advisors and assistants.
Second.
Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Miss Concepcion?
Yes.
Miss Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Labrie?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item eleven?
Mandated regulations for second reading. A, regulation forty-one-sixty, physical examination. B, regulation thirty-one-sixty, physical examination. C, regulation fifty-two-hundred, attendance. D, regulation eighty-four-sixty-seven, firearms and weapons.
Second.
Any questions? Pull the board, please.
Miss Concepcion?
Yes.
Miss Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Labrie?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Item twelve?
Motion to approve routine items by exception. Having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda items as submitted. A, staffing for March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. B, HIV report for March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. C, approved travel and related expenses, virtual and in-person. D, approve for HHS scholarship applications for seniors. E, approve HHS overnight DECA trip, Orlando, Florida, April twenty-twenty-five. F, approve new field trip sites for upcoming trips. G, resolution to issue E-Rate Form four-seventy-one award for wireless access points. H, resolution to issue E-Rate Form forty-seven, or four-hundred-and-seventy-one award for MHK internet access. I, resolution to issue E-Rate Form four-seventy-one award for MHK network cabling. J, resolution to issue E-Rate Form four-seventy-one award for HHS internet access. K, professional services for students. L, transportation jointure. M, bid rejection, HHS scoreboard replacement. N, approval of HVAC and interior upgrades at change order number four. O, professional service contract, Edwards Engineering. P, co-op purchases. Q, board meeting minutes for March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. R, executive session board minutes, March tenth, twenty-twenty-five. S, bill list of March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Any questions? Paul, I just have one inquiry, or perhaps a small request, under this, the, um, approve, I, I, item C, approved travel and related expenses. Oftentimes, I'll go in and look up what all the acronyms are when we're approving things, just because I feel that's good process. Is there a way that you could just do that ahead of time and tell us what it's for?
Do you have an example of that?
Um, the... Yes, New Jersey Teasal, that's a good one, mm-hmm. Um, let's see. The one that took me a little more time was the, um, where is that? Sorry. The OFAC fingerprinting in school bus safety, it took me a little bit of time that, to figure out what office that was, what OFAC stood for. I did drill down a little bit, but it's just...
You know we like our acronyms.
I know, but I just thought it'd be helpful for the board to not have to go out and do all that research every time we're approving. Some of them are more obvious, even, they, they look like they go together, of course, but I just thought it would be good process to do that, if it's not too much trouble.
Duly noted.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, pull the board.
Miss Concepcion?
Yes.
Miss Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Labrie?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Okay, being we do not have the need for a second executive session, I call this meeting to an end. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Have a great night.